There's somewhat of a difference in production quality.[21.12][21.12](laughter) Good morning, commissioners. In front of you, please find the Roosevelt testimony to be hearing today, our community response to Cornell's DEIS and letters of concern from residents. My name is Judy Buck and I'm on the board of the Roosevelt Island Community Coalition, more easily remembered as RIC. RIC represents 35 Roosevelt Island organizations that united over the past year to consider the arrival of Cornell University. We drafted a document of concerns. We met with Community Board Aide, with City Council member Jessica Lappin, Borough President Scott Stenner, and others. We drafted conditions to Cornell's project, most of which were adopted by Community Board Aide when it approved the project, and we're in continual talks with the Cornell team. Today, we're here to ask that you not view the Cornell project as just another urban development, because Roosevelt Island is not just another neighborhood. We're a small island, a small mixed-income community, a small town, racewood trees, river views, a vibrant and diverse population, and a high proportion of senior citizens and disabled. We reached Manhattan through the F train and the tram. We're connected to Queens by a very modest bridge, and we are a community of many vulnerabilities. In our shocking financial structure, our crumbling infrastructure, and our unusual population, you'll be hearing about these topics from other RIC speakers. As you know, Roosevelt Island is where Cornell University will create a groundbreaking visionary partnership between academia and business. The Cornell complex will rise on more than 2 million square feet. Some buildings will be 30 stories tall, and it'll take about 25 years to complete, which brings us to an urgent topic: trucks. Roosevelt Island is a one-street town. Main Street, which is pictured here, runs the length of the island and carries all traffic. It's where most of our apartments are located, where we meet for coffee and shop, and where our children attend school. Cornell's construction will bring trucks down this street for an average of 86 trips per day. That's roughly one truck every seven minutes. Trucks holding up traffic on the bridge from Queens, trucks spewing exhaust noise, diesel fumes, vibrations, and possibly toxic materials. Trucks from which there will be no escape. We appeal to Cornell to use other methods, and we greatly appreciate that Cornell is examining the use of barges and ferries. However, as of today, the Cornell proposal states that trucks and only trucks will be used for transport. Commissioners, as you review this project, we ask for your vigilance, your understanding, and your protection. Please don't truck from Roosevelt Island. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm puzzling. One second, there may be questions. I have a question.
Thank you for coming, but I do have a quick question. Sorry. I don't know if you're the appropriate person to answer this question. I'll have to queue in after you will meet. Specifically, to the land lease situation and how that impacts on the financing.
That will be covered by another speaker, several.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Joyce Minchev is next, and then Lynn Burke.
And that speaker happens to be me. I'm Joyce Minchev. I'm a 37-year resident of Roosevelt Island. I serve on the board of RIC. I'm also a common council member, the site director of the New York Junior Tennis League, and the president of the tenants' association in the largest building on Roosevelt Island. And I kept on going. Unfortunately, I used my whole three minutes. I'm sure that you'd all love to have a nickel for every community that stood before you and told them that they were unique. And if one move finish, you don't think Roosevelt Island is unique, we're happy to supply you with that nickel. None of the basic operational services that are paid for are provided by the city of New York. Elsewhere throughout the city, yet a nickel of funding on Roosevelt Island, the city doesn't even sweep or plow our streets. We also don't receive a nickel from the state. We were cut from the state's budget under the Pataki administration and deemed self-sufficient. So our policing, internal transportation, grounds maintenance, repairs, cleanup, staffing, facilities, infrastructure, and the public purpose funds that support our quality of life are entirely paid for by the land leases that our administrative authority collects from buildings constructed on the island, or by leasing Roosevelt Island assets such as parks and athletic facilities. Our residents pay those land leases by the rent that we pay to our landlords, and those land leases and leased assets provide the entire operational budget of Roosevelt Island. Currently, our ball fields are leased so frequently that our children only have limited use of them. The money to maintain them comes from our land leases. Where will the money come from to cover the cost of the added use by Cornell's population? The current residents of the hospital barely use the services that the able-bodied people that Cornell brings in will need in order to fully integrate into our community. Cornell Technion will not be paying the land lease to our community for the 12 and 1/2 acres of space that it will occupy, yet it will be deriving all the necessary services that keep residents safe and comfortable from the pool of funding that other residents supply. Typically, when your esteemed body considers applications through the ULR process, you are determining whether the city and the applicant have adequately provided for the needs of the community. But in this instance, even though both the city and Cornell profit from this venture, and that's these co-location votes that unfortunately just disappeared, but you'll see that it's actually 1/3 of the space of their build-out, that's going to generate income from the city, it's going to generate income for Cornell, it isn't going to generate a nickel for Roosevelt Island. Sorry, I just have a few sentences to go on.
Okay, Martha, you know what? I'm sure that... Why don't I just say a question? Are there other things that you want to say?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate your kind consideration. Very importantly, our public safety department serves as Roosevelt Island's alternative to a police force. The Justice Department, and that's right here, and you'll see that report, it's only one page of it, and you'll see it in your packages. The Justice Department reports that the city provides 45 police officers for 10,000 residents in New York City. But on Roosevelt Island, where we have approximately 14,000 residents currently, we have only one part-time police officer to do an eight-hour shift three days per week. That's it. Our policing needs are met by our public safety staff of 37 officers, which is well below what the Justice Department refers to in their statistics of New York City. So who will pay for the added staff Cornell's population will warrant? The city supplies Yeshiva University with two fully-staffed police booths around the clock, over and above Yeshiva's own private security force. The community of Roosevelt Island that surrounds Cornell deserves no less consideration from the city than the community that surrounds Yeshiva University. Only by moving students, faculty, and co-location staff into a walled community, that's the only method that will prevent the impacts of Cornell on Roosevelt Island. We ask that the city protect Roosevelt Island from the unique problem of being a non-supported enclave (can't find my pages) that is... that we don't... that does not derive the necessary budgets from both the city and the state when we place a city coffer enhancing enterprise into our midst. Some of the money raised by the city must be returned to the island to cover the increased operating budget that will be needed when Cornell arrives. And Commissioner Levin, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure I reflect the sentiments of most of the people sitting in this room, for your thoughtful concern of exactly this circumstance. Columbia donated $150 million, I believe that that's the correct number, to Harlem for its expansion. What can be done to help Roosevelt Island? So thank you for your time and consideration. Limited barging is not sufficient. We only have one street, and we need it protected from the elderly, disabled population that exists. And you'll see on the pictures here what Main Street actually looks like. Our buildings are right on top of it. The construction noise, the construction traffic, it's not okay. We only have one little street.
Great. Thank you so much. As you know, we just received this. Good morning. And the Community Board of residents did point out issues with the truck strike. But did you... in this document, did you lay out where you thought particular services might be impacted?
Certainly.
Are the others documented, so we can...
Let me just... if you could hold that up again for me, I'll see what that document is.
Is this from you?
Okay, it only has my testimonial. However...
But did you outline somewhere where you think is specific, whether it's a public safety area, where you think there are specific areas that the addition of the Cornell campus would add to specific services on the island, where the gaps are and, you know, what you can...
I can definitely do that for you. One of the things that I...
That's not in your testimony, but I didn't...
Yeah, unfortunately, it wasn't. One of the things that was addressed, and again, Commissioner Levin addressed parking. The motor gate is a very far distance from the Cornell campus. For many people, it's really not walkable. The likelihood is that when people drive onto the island, they'll probably unload whatever they bring and then go back to the motor gate to park. So in fact, that creates double traffic, not less traffic. The Community Board came out to Roosevelt Island a couple of times during this process, and interestingly, although they all were supporting limiting parking at Cornell, I asked them specifically, how many of you drove to Roosevelt Island today? Now, they're all claiming that, you know, with all our wonderful transportation, which is the F train, that is the most consistent, you know, way to access Roosevelt Island from the bulk of the city of New York, the F train is extremely crowded. I don't know how many of you might use it, but when it gets to Roosevelt Island, our folks can't get on. Sometimes, we have to wait for three trains to pass. Can you imagine what increasing our population by 1/3 will do to our transportation? So a lot of people are going to drive to the community, and not having a parking facility down there might raise the traffic, not lower the traffic. And I believe Commissioner Cantor raised an issue of the bridge. The bridge was upgraded, the helix was not. The helix is the roadway, the circular roadway that brings cars down off of the bridge. So the bridge now is probably very, very well constructed. Our helix is falling apart. You know, there really needs to be a showing up of this helix before you bring construction vehicles down that helix. Keep in mind that that helix brings ambulances, fire trucks, brings all of our emergency vehicles, and brings us. We go to Costco to shop, who's gonna... what are you gonna do? How are you gonna get your groceries back to Roosevelt Island? Barging, it can't be left at Cornell's discretion, how much money they want to spend on barging. We have, you know, one little roadway. The city of New York has to control how much barging is required. We have very limited parks and ball fields and recreational facilities. Cornell is increasing our population by 30%. As a 30% increase over what we have now, our kids cannot go into their ball fields that are in their backyard and go out and practice throwing a baseball around with their dad. They have to wait until the corporate leasing folks get off of that ball field in order to practice. So we believe that Cornell can help by spending some money on putting aside a portion of our ball fields and increasing our budget for maintaining the facilities. Our tennis courts are very, very limited. You know, 30% population increase. We've got the same six courts that we had when I moved into this community 37 years ago. It doesn't work. We actually had to cut back the New York Junior Tennis League, and I'm sorry to bore you folks, because we didn't have enough hours of court time available. We're funded to provide more hours by our funding sources for the league. We can't get those ball fields, those courts, the sufficient amount of hours for the funding that we receive. It's a shame, because it's, you know, it really helps our kids. If there's anybody else that has any... I'm sure the folks coming after me are also.
So, Minchev, thank you for your testimony. It's very helpful. I was happy to have you in the background. And it's quite persuasive as it relates to the legislative system, but could you maybe share what conversations you've had either with Cornell or with EDC specifically about financing mechanisms or initiatives that you're raising?
We haven't heard directly from EDC. We have had conversations with Cornell. Cornell has been very specific that they will pay for nothing, other than the things that are within their purview related to education. There is a commitment on their part to create four pilot schools that they will help support in terms of not money, but programming. And fortunately, Roosevelt Island is one of them. They consider the education things that they're providing for the community to be the monetary give-back that they're giving to this community. They completely negate any of the impacts that they have. You know, when you look at the statistics that they're addressing through the ULR process, you're looking at the statistics that relate to an entire city, all isolated. Their impact on our community is to raise the population of our community by minimally 1/3. We have one street. We are an isolated community. Our kids can't go three blocks down and two blocks over and play in somebody else's backyard. Our folks can't get onto the island if the helix collapses. You know, we need support, and we beg you sincerely to consider what this community needs, because it is unique. We don't get supported by the city. We don't get supported by the state. We need the city to give back some of the money that's raising by this development, by building this complex to Roosevelt Island to help defray some of the expenses. Otherwise, it goes to the renters. It falls on our shoulders.
Hannah?
That raises a question I've been puzzling about in my... First of all, I'd like to say, last time I visited the island, I came by the F train and...[1101.11][1101.11](laughter)
So I feel your issues. But what happens when... And my question is about the interplay between your public safety department and anything else, community in New York City and maybe... What happens when someone calls 911? Where does the fire truck come from? Where does the police come from? How often do they come? Where do the ambulances come from? How do you get those services that your public safety department can't provide? Because you're making a plea for us to help your public... provide you with resources, but are there other city resources you need as well?
Your question is so thoughtful. We so appreciate it.
Didn't you all...
We have a public safety department. It's manned by 37 staff. Our public safety department at full build from Cornell, I don't even know the number off the top of my head. I think it's probably about 66 or something like that. There's no budget for it. But when you have a problem on Roosevelt Island, let's say you need a... Okay, there's a crime that's committed on Roosevelt Island, and you call 911. That call is routed to our public safety department. The public safety department responds. The public safety department makes an arrest or doesn't make an arrest accordingly. And the only time that the police department is called is after the perpetrator is handcuffed and detained, and then the police department could be called in order to transport that person off of the island. Ambulances... So when... And I'm glad to raise the issue of fire protection, because our fire protection comes from Queens. And sometimes, when people make a call for fire protection, sometimes the communicator, I don't remember what it's called, the dispatcher, gets it wrong. There's more than one Main Street in New York City. So we've had problems that resulted from the lack of communication, the lack of knowledge of, you know, how the city should be responding to our needs. Ambulances also come from off-island. We had an ambulance service that was a volunteer service on Roosevelt Island. During bureaucratic whatevers, they were disbanded. And so quite frankly, to give you an example, if you are ill on the F train, the MTA, and this should be changed, so that maybe you might all have input in it, if you get sick on the Roosevelt Island stop, or between Roosevelt Island and anyplace else, and the next stop is Roosevelt Island, they'll stop the train there, and they'll call an ambulance, and you'll wait there for 20 minutes while that ambulance... while your call is responded to, or if it went to the next stop, it would take you two minutes to get to the next stop, an ambulance would be called, it would take two minutes to get the ambulance there, and you'd be off to the hospital. So these are some of the particular problems that we have because of the service and lack of service.
We're gonna have to move on to the next speaker.
Thank you so much.
I want to thank you for your testimony. I appreciate it. And if there's anything else you would like to say or suggest, I'd love to hear it.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Lynn Burke, and then I guess, Applebaum.
Good morning, everyone. I'm used to talking and speaking with five-year-olds to 15-year-olds. I'm a public school teacher on Roosevelt Island at PSIS 217, and I'm representing Ms. Principal Donna Becklin today. She wasn't able to make it. First, I'd like to bring the fact up that our school is listed in the community facilities and draft environmental impact statement, DEIS, as having only 325 students. That data is not correct. We have 482 students presently, from pre-kindergarten through eighth grade, coming from over 60 nations, speaking over 35 languages. I am an ESL teacher, and I teach kindergarten through eighth grade. The first thing we'd like to let you know is that we're looking for three key partnerships with the Cornell Technion campus. Those would be for our teachers, our students, and our school community. Studies have shown that investing in staff yields higher performance schools. Clearly, Cornell does invest in their staff, and we obviously see those results. We are looking for a partnership that would serve as mentors and facilitators, supporting the internal structures of our school building, as well as supporting our literacy, math, science, and technology information. Bridging two schools together is a goal that we would like to see in the very near future. We are looking for long-term partnerships. We're not looking for an eight-week program, two months here and there, a visit from a campus professor. We're looking for long-term partnerships. We are saying, if this campus is going to come, we will welcome them with open arms, but we want to work with them, not work against them, or not be related to them whatsoever. It's vital that we invest in professional training for teachers and technology training workshops, as these are the latest teaching tools being used in classrooms, not only across the nation, but around the world. It's a vital step to advance our students, to make an impact by working with Cornell in their science, tech, engineering, and math STEM, as well as believing that with the experiences that we can foster with Cornell and continue to keep, that we will make all of our students future college and career ready. We know that Cornell offers the following partnerships and organizations, including Career Day options, middle school after-school programs and clubs, the Ruby Goldberg machine and robotic science, and we know that they have offered core classes for honor students in math and fractals and chaos. We also would like to have that in our school. We are a very small school considering the population of our island, and we want to see more and more students coming to our school because of the programs that we can offer, and be proud to boast that Cornell would be working with us on those programs. We really hope that, like I said, this could be a full-time partnership that will be started sooner than later. Three decades from now, we'll probably... I'll be retired by that time, so I wouldn't really see the fruitful things of that, giving away my age yesterday with my birthday. Basically, this is what we're looking for. We would like to welcome it, but we really want to know how they can work with us and how we can make this a wonderful experience for everyone on the island, as well as people coming from around the world to the campuses. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see if there are any questions. Fair enough. We appreciate you for...
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
All right, Applebaum. Will be followed by Linda Hyrum, and then Mark Line.
My name is Adek Applebaum. I'm a recent resident of Roosevelt Island, and I've been a construction manager and project manager in construction for over 60 years. Mr. Cantor will probably understand what I'm driving at. I know you can hear me, but I'm not sure you can see me. I'm here to make my points on construction. When my neighbor and project manager, Ms. April Ward, brought this project to my attention, we concentrated on the construction flaws that Cornell obviously missed in their pre-planning. We think Cornell either ignored or didn't, wasn't aware that Murphy's Law governs every construction major project. They assumed that everything would go perfectly well. I'm referring specifically to the schedule, which is very primitive and flawed. It is thus not based on CPM, so therefore, all the guesswork is done on the schedule, which is not realistic. The second item in construction that stood out more than anything else is Cornell plans, or planned, I don't know, they've changed their attitude, to bring in ready-mixed concrete when we need about 300,000 to 500,000 yards of concrete. They wish to truck this in by truck. Somebody in my group mentioned it would be hundreds of trucks on the bridge. The vibration would be disastrous, the pollution life-wise, and the possibility of accidents are tremendous. So the first thing we have to do is make sure that Cornell approaches differently. We suggested, and I think they are now beginning to realize, that we should follow the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers practices to establish a ready-mix plan on the site to provide Cornell in the project with concrete when they need it. This would eliminate the trucking and some of the other problems that have been mentioned, and only raw materials, such as cement, gravel, and so on, could be brought in by barges. That's a very mandatory problem. It will eliminate the trucking problem, the accidents, and so forth. And we would like to make sure that Cornell takes advantage of our expertise, which we offer. We would like to see this project built in cooperation, not confrontation, and we will do the best we can to help them. I am obviously for the project. It's good for the island, it's good for the city, and certainly good for the residents of Roosevelt Island. I happen to intimately know the workings of Cornell. I've lectured there for several years during a project for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I think they will be a big help to the city, and I think they will provide international prestige to the island. And so I hope that Cornell listens to us, to accept our help, and let us help in the planning of the project in an indirect advisory portion, or to make sure that none of the possibilities creep in to our detriment. We want to have an oversea project.
Thank you, Mr. Applebaum. Let me see if there are any questions to you.
Mr. Applebaum, first of all, while you may be vertically challenged, I don't think your intellectual challenge... your intellectual challenges at all. Some of your comments regarding the construction, I'm very much in tune with. Has the ability outreach between the Roosevelt Island organization and Cornell with regard to this specific subject?
We've had several meetings. I've expressed that opinion. I think they're somewhat reluctant to go for barging. They seem to think that the cost implications are great. I beg to differ with them. The cost implications will be very favorable to the project and the availability of ready-mix undercycling you need is very acceptable and right. There is something intrinsically wrong with bringing in ready-mixed concrete that is mostly water, as you know, to an island that is surrounded by water. It's just not, it's a flaw, I think, in the planning that Cornell overlooked, either intentionally or by accident. We strongly suggest that this cement-mix plant temporary cemental span be established on the island for the duration of the project and that it could be disbanded. The cost implications are very minor. It will only cost one dollar more per yard of concrete than it would if we trucked it without the danger of collisions, vibration damage, and no time damage to the street and the helix.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Some of the points that Mr. Apolbou has made here are points that I have raised noted before as issues, whether it be the concrete trucks versus the barging or whether it be the very large, heavy structure, steel trucks and rebar trucks. A comment was made by Cornell that they are considering both, which may or may not, at the end of the day, ended in their discretion as saying, no. I would ask, I would suggest for a project such as this, it virtually needs the city's law to work in coordination with Cornell. I would say maybe in order to face this challenge, much too late, ultimately, World Trade Center science were, we saw, many, many years of confusion. I don't know who the agency should be, EDC. I don't know who should be in charge, but I do believe that with all due respect to Cornell, as to others who have come before us. The expression we are considering is one that is extremely open and considerations are usually driven by cost. Sometimes money has to be spent in order to help the community.
So, you have other speakers from Cornell, especially at the end of the hearing. I understand the number of trucks, the benefit, the benefits of having a ration plan on site etc. So, we expect the speakers towards the end of the hearing to address that. I was trying to look for the number of trucks. I think I was told about thirty-five a day. I think there were more here. So, look at it more intended with answer from.
Well, it's fair to say Cornell, he was talking about how many yards are going to be built in twenty years.
Well, okay, but there was, and this was turned phases pretty quick, I thought, twenty-seven.
At this point, it's only a guess. We never had access to the schematic plans, but it's a good, there's a formula that I present in my memory to you, that you can easily estimate roughly how many yards. But it's a hell of a lot of yards and a heck of a lot of trucks required to bring it in, most of which is water. Bring it to an island, make, not this island.
Thank you, Mr. Apolbou. Let me see if there are any other questions to you. There are not. We really appreciate your testimony and if there's something you want to leave with the secretary.
Thank you very much and I beg Mr. Kent to understand your, like, construction concerns.
Thank you. Linda Hymer and then Mark Lyon.
Adet and I are vertically challenged in opposite directions, so I'm going to raise this up a little bit. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Linda Hymer. I've lived on Roosevelt Island for thirty, thirty-two years and I've been an island activist for twenty years because I'm committed to keeping the island, our community, as close as possible from the plan that its founders envisioned, allowing, of course, for improvement. I'm on board of directors of RIC and the three dozen organizations that make up RIC have concerns about construction vehicles for reasons of pollution, damage to infrastructure, and congestion. Others will address these issues. I'm going to be focusing on early morning noise. Our island has a large proportion of disabled and elderly whose health could be adversely affected by lack of sleep and irritation from early morning noise. The DEIS Chapter Twenty says that in twenty-one months in Phase One, they estimated daily totals of about a thousand construction-related vehicle trips, that's trucks, cars, SUVs, in the average eleven-hour day, and that's one and a half trips per minute added to the traffic that is already excessively heavy. Can you imagine living with that level of traffic congestion, pollution, and noise five or six days a week for almost two years? Can you imagine waiting for an ambulance or fire truck if it can't get through because of all the construction traffic on our one very narrow street? But getting back to noise, RIC has found that most impacts in the DEIS are severely underestimated. And yet, in Chapter Twenty, Cornell admits that trucks along Main Street will cause significant noise impacts between six and seven AM, exceeding C-word noise impact criteria. The solution, of course, is many, if only you said, is barging. But even with barging, there'll be a certain amount of truck, of construction-related traffic and construction noise. In Chapter Twenty, I also learned the following. Normal work, weekday work would be between seven and four, with most workers arriving to repair work areas between six and seven AM, when the heaviest truck traffic will traverse Main Street. To meet construction schedules, sometimes the workday will be extended to six PM and into Saturday from nine to five. A delay should not cause a problem because Cornell plans to build twice as fast as stated in agreement with the city. In total, this means that during certain periods will have the noise of heavy construction vehicles and on-site construction equipment from early morning to evening, including some weekends, on and off for the next twenty-five years. This was not what was intended in the island's general development plan. I may ask this commission to require Cornell to change its work schedule. I understand that variants could be obtained so that work could commence at nine AM. Also, work should not be allowed in or on weekends because residents will need some respite from construction noise and disruption. When RIC sent out questionnaires about the island organization, several people expressed concern about noise levels and duration, especially in the early morning. It's unfair to expect this quiet, planned community to endure early morning noise along all the other disruptions accompanying the Cornell complex construction over the next twenty-five years. I implore this commission to require barging in order to severely curtail truck havoc and also to make a start time of eight or nine AM part of your requirements for approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Let me see if there are questions to you. Anna, the next speaker is Mark Lyon and then Matthew Katz and then Ellen Colvey.
I have a written copy of my testimony that you can.
Should I give it to the secretary or will we try to distribute it?
Thank you. My name is Mark Lyon. I live on Roosevelt Island and am a board member of the Roosevelt Island Community Coalition. I arrived today in support of the Cornell's facility and have questions about the information they've provided us far. Much has been made of Cornell's desire to be part of the Roosevelt Island community, but their plans indicated a desire to operate their portion of the island in isolation from the whole. In my limited time, I'd like to address three major concerns. First, the hospital site is known to contain hazardous materials. In addition to standard hazards found in buildings of their age, the ground below the buildings contained heavy metals, semi-volatile organic compounds, and other toxins. Removing these materials by truck will risk exposing residents of Roosevelt Island, Queens, and Manhattan to these substances. The construction site is located close to several parks and recreational facilities, including those designed for children. For the protection of those near the construction site and along the removal path, it is important that an independent air and water monitoring program be implemented. It would also be reasonable to require barging to be used for removing materials so as to prevent those materials from traveling down Roosevelt Island's only street. Second, while Cornell is undertaking efforts to make their academic building, one of their academic buildings, a net-zero structure, they have not undertaken any effort to extend a cohesive energy solution plan towards the island. The Applied Sciences RFP clearly identified that replacement of the existing steam plant was necessary. That plant currently provides steam services for the existing hospital, color hospital in the north, sports park, and other facilities on the island. Cornell has not, however, not addressed the dramatic impact that the removal of the load of the buildings that they will no longer need will place upon the remainder of the island. Roosevelt Island has served as a testbed for new and innovative energy solutions such as the Verted Power Title Energy Turbine and the ETC Power Fuel Cell. Many of the residential buildings, however, were not designed with energy efficiency in mind. They are poorly insulated and utilize electricity as their primary heat source. Cornell's green energy initiative should span beyond the campus and encompass the entire island. Helping to implement a modernized steam and power co-generation facility would provide power to meet the needs of both the campus and the existing island facilities while offsetting some of the island's commercial electrical needs. According to Table 12-2 of the DEIS, the campus is going to attract between five thousand nine hundred and forty-five people and seven thousand five hundred and eighty-nine students, professors, staff, business people, family members, and hotel guests. Very little consideration has been given providing these people with adequate recreational facilities. One of the innovative features of the Roosevelt Island General Development Plan is the provision for community recreational opportunities. Existing opportunities include paths, fields, courts, pools, and gyms that are accessible not only to island residents but to the entire city of New York. Current users, however, overwhelm that capacity. For example, one of my neighbors travels to Manhattan to play tennis each week because she can't get time on one of our six tennis courts. Any visual recreational facilities, whether located on the development site, should be required for private business size.
Thank you so much. Let me see if there are questions to you.
Sure.
There are not. We have your testimony. We appreciate your.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Matthew Katz and Ellen Colvey and then Gita Gurney.
Good morning. Pardon me. Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Katz and I've served on the Roosevelt Island Residents Association since nineteen ninety-seven, eight years as president, elected island-wide to four two-year terms. Currently, I'm the director of the Roosevelt Island Community Coalition and I'm here today for that capacity. Commissioner Verge, it's nice to see you again. I've participated in the Vision 2020 Initiative to Aggress City Waterfront and Waterway Concerns under your leadership and that of Michael Murdock. And that was hopefully leading to the ferry service that we said that we need. Today, I want to address the population figures in the DEIS, which are critical in terms of assessing the concentration of new residents, i.e. students, faculty, and administration, as well as transients, that is, co-locators, business people who will commute daily to Roosevelt Island, as well as visitors to campus. Both groups will be using island services and infrastructure and the population figures will determine the anticipated stress. The complex that's full-built out will comprise two-point-one-three million square feet, of which one-point-four-six million square feet will be utilized by academics, residences, and central utilities. This leaves six-hundred-ninety-five thousand square feet as co-location sites, retail facilities, and an executive education center, including a hotel. Population figures have been determined using a ratio of four workers per one thousand square feet or two-hundred-and-fifty square feet per worker. Based on a February two thousand twelve study, the current U.S. average is one-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet per worker, expected to decrease below one-hundred square feet per worker by two thousand seventeen. Therefore, the DEIS figure is overly generous and the actual estimate for the complex should be fifty-five percent greater for the total population, forty-three percent during Phase One. Note that co-location office workers comprising one-third of the total population will not reside on campus and will contribute most heavily to the traffic and transportation issues, which are already at a level that in some locations cannot be mitigated. Our F train and aerial tramway are already sardine heads during lunchtime. The assumption for both co-location sites and for academic space are, at best, unexplained and, at worst, inaccurate, causing increased environmental impact which will need to be recaptured. Finally, I urge you to limit trucking on our one street and to require barging of debris all Friday and construction material on island. Don't truck for this alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see if there are questions to you. Ellen Colvey.
Good afternoon. My name is Ellen Colvey. I am the president of the Roosevelt Island Residents Association, consisting of twelve-thousand residents.